Start the meeting. Legislators House, Re Hill, and Shaw have all been excused for today. Let's go ahead and look at the approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'd like a motion.
Thank you, Ed. You got a second?
Second.
Boris, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Who we got? Resolutions of the day. We have one for today. It's the Resolution Authorizing Budgetary Modifications. This is for operating expenses or Opportunities. Let me start over. Oswego County Opportunities Operating Assistance Funds for STOA. I believe, Dave, do you want to give a quick pitch on this? I know it's something we've done historically, pretty much every year, but...
Yep, typically, we would have just a pass-through resolution here because the amount provided to us by the Department of Transportation would be for exactly what we had earned with mileage and ridership over the previous quarter. In this particular first quarter, Department of Transportation decided to give us some extra money. Our intent is to use that to market the system better and kind of rebrand it so that people really understand that our buses are public transportation. They're not some kind of special bus for a certain group of people. And we're going to try to clean up ridership and make it a more robust road transportation system. So instead of just a pass-through, there's a portion that goes to them that was earned for mileage and ridership in the balance that will stay in an account that we've created here for this rebranding and marketing of the system.
And Dave, will that be, will the active marketing be done through our tourism, our planning department, or is that something we would contract out to somebody else to do?
We're going to start out by jointly putting together a plan with our mobility management team. They've already got some things in place that we're looking at launching here really soon. And then if we need, like, design assistance for a bus wrap or something, if we get to that point, we'll probably contract out for some of those things.
That's great. Any questions, Bob?
I just want to say that this was one of the things that when I went out of the council that was important to me because the buses are not, people do not understand that these are special need buses or something. We needed to have rebranding, so, and we didn't have money. So I was very excited. And I'm also, is that now we can start having our advisory board meetings. And I've already talked to Donna. We're going to be having one in September so we can start talking about ideas and getting everybody together. So I'm very excited about this. This is the next step of really increasing our ridership.
That's great. Any other questions? Any other statements? One of the things, Rich, I have been talking a little bit, is that we still do not have a representative on the central board, which is a pretty expensive, if you look at it, dollar amount that we as a county do invest there. To not have any representation on that board in Oswego County, we agree, is probably not the best way to spend that money. So we're going to be looking to actively encourage the state to make that appointment. There are a couple of names that we've put forward. Understanding is, do you have an update, Dave Malor?
Oh, I've given an update.
Okay, go ahead.
They've gotten all the bios and stuff. And Albany continues to say that they have not been able to get hold of Gary, who was one of the names, MeShaw.
Mashaw.
Yeah. And Gary said something to Donna. It's a lot of financial information, so I don't even know if he is going to continue. And we also gave him Jim, Legislative Paris Act's name, and they kind of don't want to do legislator. So we're going to talk to Gary again and say, if you're not going to do it, we need to know. So we need to start doing a search in the court of the may.
Rich, the most gubernatorial appointments, they do a background check of candidates. So they want to make sure there's no conflicts and everything else that's probably why they want to do some financial stuff. And then the governor moved the appointment secretary position, I believe, to OGS for transparency or something, right? So I don't know how that process works.
Okay. That's something we were actively looking to and hoping...
Yeah, we still aren't looking. We're trying to contact to see what's going on because it's been years.
Years, right? Rich, you have been tracking Dave.
And this wouldn't be the first time that somebody decided that they didn't want to go through once we got that far. And they requested all the background information. People in the past have said, I'm not going to bow the back for sitting on a board that really could be 50/50 whether I do it or not. You know, no one, we've never found anybody passionate enough to want to be on that board who was willing to go through the whole vetting process.
Sure. All right. Boris?
Many years ago, I thought, look, and we had a heck of a time getting appointed. We got to the point, we never got a representative from here because we couldn't get anybody to appoint us. Believe me, this has gone on for years.
Oh, yeah.
And it, pardon my French, and I think it's political, whatever the reasons are. I'm sorry. It's been for years and years, we could not get anybody on here.
Well, at least the good news is it sounds like we're through the majority of the process. Maybe just that, Mel, I know you're, I know you're working on it, Rich, I know you're working on it. So hopefully, we have some better information at some point. If Mr. Mashaw is not interested, we would need to come up with another name that would be, I think, put forward from this...
I think you like two names.
Yeah, it would be nice to do two of them.
So neither can Nate Generis, Dave, or doesn't want to put forward the process.
Maybe we could even make sure that going forward, the folks who we put names forward, they understand the process, just so it doesn't end up getting lost halfway through. All right, that's good information. Okay, anything else on this resolution? It's exciting to see us getting a little bit more money than we originally expected. Let's hope that continues. All right, make a motion now. You have a second?
Sorry.
Ed, thank you. I need more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Kerry's one. Okay, we're going to move on to department updates. Dave, I believe you have an update. Boris?
Just, you know, budget season has had everybody pretty busy trying to meet the pretty strenuous demands of finding a way to continue what we do with very limited resources next year. Also, we were finally awarded some census dollars, so we put a program together for that. A lot of that kicks off actually today. About time we got the contracts executed and marketing partners in place. We were required to use, again, a not-for-profit that had been approved by the state. And off the list that we had, there was about seven or eight in Oswego County that had been approved. Only one was interested in partnering on really short notice over a really compact time period. So all of our work will be done by Oswego County Opportunities. And we've got a good team put together to really hit the streets and start getting the word out. So we'll have billboards throughout the county. We'll have Latin TV and radio, regular newspaper, not TV, for Latin, newspaper, I'm sorry. We have partnership with WCNY that's geared towards kids and parents at home. We have a program where we'll hit all the senior living communities specifically to get the word out to them. And it's a pretty, pretty robust project for a 30-day cycle. So we're hoping to bring count up around 60% on average in the county right now. We finished 2010 at around 64%. So we're working hard to give a last-minute push to really get those numbers out.
That's great. Now, Dave, I know we have a sizable English-speaking population, Spanish, maybe some French up the north, but I didn't know there's a lot of Latin speakers. Is that...
Oh, Spanish, I'm sorry.
It's dead light, right?
The company that gives is called Latin Radio TV or newspaper.
Thank you, Dave, for putting that together. I know we had some discussions over the last few months about that. It's tough to put out the type of communication that we need to without any funding. And my understanding is they still only funded us about half what we originally expected, so...
They did tough to fund it in half, and unfortunately, because of the time that we had left and the lack of other partners, we didn't even ask for all of that money. But we did about 70% of what they offered us, so...
That's good. Is there any questions for Dave on the census? Ed?
No. Only comment I want to make is I've seen so many people out, I know in Scrupul, that are going house to house for, you know, picking up the people that hadn't done it. So I hadn't seen anybody before, and now I'm seeing them coming even to our house to say, where is this number, you know, type of a thing, so...
Yeah, even the census kind of laid back during the COVID period, and they just recently started hiring more enumerators. Like, last week, with 30 days left, they hired more people to hit the streets, so...
Yeah. Very visible still.
Are you hearing a lot of people having concern about people coming to their doors? That was one of the things we talked about, was just the concern of anybody walking up to your door these days is a little frightening.
Well, you know, I've seen a lot of them outside talking to people. Like, take a lot of people, you know, they got their masks, but they're outside, so... Well, the weather's...
Sure. Ed, did you have a question?
Yeah, Dave, there was a conference call scheduled last week on the fishery. And I tried to get into it. Actually, it happened, it was a close call. I was only able to get in.
Yes, so legislature Gilson is talking about a conference call we had with the Health Department, Sheriff's Department, New York State DEC, and various departments within the DEC to talk about how will we manage the annual influx of anglers who are coming for the salmon. And it was pretty, DEC had a pretty comprehensive plan put together about public information, people in the field. So they have, they have what they call an annual CREO sample, C-R-D-E-L, and that's DEC employees who walk the parking lots, walk the river, and they talk to anglers about their experiences and size and type of fish they're catching. And then they use that data every year to plan for management officially. So those people will also be enforcing, if you will, you know, social distancing, wearing masks. They have beefed up law enforcement team to patrol parking lots. And they're not going to go up to somebody and say, I see you have a plate from Virginia. Did you know that that's a restricted state? Did you quarantine? They're going to rely more on the owners of the lodging accommodations to encourage folks through the reservation process that remind you that there's this quarantine process in place to come here and complain for that. They will be kind of breaking up, if you will, parties of people who congregate in parking lots to talk about the big fish they caught or whatever. So they're going to work hard to keep people socially distanced and properly entired. We're going to do some work with them. The village is engaged, the mayor and the police chief with posting signs and reminding people. And we'll, we'll be distributing material to the lodging accommodations. They have even gone to, like, political signs that they'll be posting around at various access points, reminding people about the importance of protective measures, things like that, so... It was a good call. It was fun. Yeah.
Rich?
I didn't participate in the call, but I had a call after that about parking on the county road. And that is not in the jurisdiction of the highway department, but the town needs to in the vicinity of the hatchery, it's passed a resolution, and send that to highway, highway to put up the low parking signs. It needs to be delineated as to, you know, how long the road parking is. That was also a concern we shared.
Yeah, so because the hatchery's going to be closed, and they get a lot of people there during this time of year who want to schoolware and see what's going on. They'll have it closed and kind of blocked off, but they're worried about people parking on the county road and walking across the property to the street where the salmon enter the hatchery. So they asked if we could restrict parking on that county route and talk to Rich. The process would be for the town to pass a resolution requesting that it be closed, and we pass that on to the town supervisor for their action. Hopefully, they'll be responding to that, so...
Got you.
Once they do it, then we can consider it. You don't have to consider it just the highway department, right?
Right.
We don't have to officially take an action.
Well, the highway engineer has to react to that.
But there has to be a resolution through the board.
There's to be a request from the town.
Is that only because they want us to put it up? If they wanted to put it up, would we, would they be allowed to?
They can close our village.
It's under vehicles, traffic, highway waters, some shared rules, and that's one.
Were they comfortable with that process? Is that something they were looking to do?
It doesn't have to come before you. Just, their board has to request it officially, and then it'll go right to highway.
Great. And I did see that the first salmon was caught at Douglasston this, two days ago, so that's always a great event. I'm a fisherman myself, and so I always look forward to the first fish, the first salmon that's caught in the river, so... So, okay, Dave, oh, yes.
I just wanted to ask, Dave, have you heard anything about a, money's for a long sight with our, down here by this, our county building and over here, if you should come into the city?
You know, we had that across from the cemetery, the land we own, and there was a grant we applied for. Do we have any luck with it?
Yeah, so we did get grants for that project, and we have, we went through the procurement process, hired firm. We're pretty close to the end of the design phase, and then we're going to pause that. We're not going to move to construction for fiscal reasons because even though we have grants, our process and the state process is that we first have to spend money, and then we'll get reimbursed. And the reimbursements, as of late, have been pre-delayed, and there's a lot of uncertainty around us getting our money back, even though we have a contract that says we will. So we're going to wait a little bit before we move to the construction phase of that. We'll, we'll keep our consultants available to us. They have a contract with us. They agreed to pause the project until we can have some more fiscal certification out and take it out of work like that.
Could I ask one more question, David? If you're on a boat in the river going through the locks, are the locks open? So you've, you know, you go from one area of the lock to the other, or do they have to put you in there and then raise the water?
Yes. I asked if they're all open right now and operating.
Yeah. What I mean by open, are they, is it allowed to flow to be consistent so somebody paddling up the river, let's say with a boat or canoe or whatever, comes to the lock?
Most of them are on a time schedule, and it goes, you know, both ways. So you may have to wait sometimes, 15, 20 minutes for your turn, so to speak. They don't, it's, it's a big process to flood and then release the water, so it's consistent throughout the day that going north, it opens at this time, going south, it opens at this time, so...
So I had people asking, who's the river for?
What are the hours of operation for the locks?
Hours of operation, I think they are seven to seven.
Good question. Anybody else have anything else? Dave, one thing I was curious about with our tourism side, this is, this is obviously one of our greatest influx of visitors periods for the county, right? I mean, this salmon season coming up here, it's starting in September, going through October, November, December, I mean, there. Is there more that you guys are actively doing on the tourism side to pump that up and, you know, New York's safe kind of an idea? Or is it more of just on hold because of all the travel restrictions?
So, right, fourth quarter for us, fourth quarter for the, that tax year is September, October, November, and it's always our strongest quarter. The state held back a lot of advertising, tourism advertising this year, and they requested that we did. In fact, as you may know, we get a small amount of money from them that they match for advertising, and they specifically said, we will not match your money during this time period. So anything that we've done, we've had to do with our own dollars. Fortunately, you know, we have a good bed tax program to support that, but we've also had to kind of tread lightly and not get them upset with us for trying to bring people here who they wish were, or can during the peak of the COVID period. So now the state understands how important this season is, not just for us, but for a lot of communities, a lot of Lake Hatero shoreline. And so that's why the DEC put together a really robust program about, they're aware that people are going to come no matter what, even with less advertising than usual, and in order to, like, not close the border and say, you can't come in. They've been proactive about trying to enhance the awareness of the importance of protective measures. So, you know, we haven't advertised as heavily as we normally would, but the people are coming anyways. They always do. Charter captains and guys will tell you they have customers who have been coming for 10, 20, 30 years, you know, they've seen generations following, you know, guys that came in their 20s are now bringing their grandkids with them, you know?
Usually, we were really excited about that. So it's a tough time for us to not be able to really highlight just how great we have it up here, so...
Well, it is a tough time, and quite frankly, we want, we're working hard to make sure we protect our residents. You know, we've got employees in the restaurants and the hotels and just neighbors who are concerned about, you know, people coming in and not being as protective as they could be while they're repaying. So we're working hard to get the message out.
Dave, do we, kind of a budget question, do we, if we do not spend the entirety of our bed tax money this year because we're not really necessarily looking to, would that help offset some of the losses next year that we anticipate having with some of the bed tax numbers being down? Does that, does it work that way, or could we...
So the bed, bed tax law requires us to spend that money and efforts to bring more people here. And what we don't spend in a particular year rolls over into next year. So, yes, the answer to your question is, we had money that rolled over from 2019, which helped offset what we didn't collect so far. We're down, we don't have the third quarter report yet because yesterday was the last day of the quarter. But for the first two quarters, we were down about 13%, which wasn't as bad as I had expected. We'll see what it looks like after third quarter, and of course, fourth quarter, it's always been the biggest for us. We did have a little bit left from last year to help make up for what we didn't get this year. And because we have been prohibited from advertising, we'll probably have money left as well next year to roll into 2021.
Well, that's encouraging, Dave. Just shifted, there's, must be any questions on that? Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I'm concerned about our attitude towards the fishery. I think it's, I think it's so important financially for our area that I would hate to see, I guess, like, a better overreaction and turn people away than find something else to do with their money in the years to come. Now, maybe a saving grace, this COVID, as I've been told, we found a lot of other options for them, but I think we have to keep level cool heads in the enforcement of, I mean, that's my opinion.
That's the plan. You know, we're not going to heat. I've had brown shirts out there locking people up and chase them away, but we are going to be proactive about reminding them, it's important to you, it's important to the people here, it's important to the fishery even, to, you know, use the property protective measures.
And I think, Ed, there was a conversation that Dave and I had just a week ago, too, talking more about how we promote the salmon record a little better. There's some potential grant funds that we've been talking about, too. So I think that everyone understands, at least, I hope they do, just the importance of that area and those folks coming up here every year and bringing, bringing their grandkids, too. So I know it is, you know, very, very important to us. But this is just such a tough time right now, and to not know, you know, what you're allowed to do, what's safe to do, really, it's a tough time, so... But Boris, go ahead.
Like, near the bottom, have you heard anything? They've moved in from Surgey University with a group coming off of Lake Shore, and they're doing tests in the lake. Started to do tests. Have you heard anything about that, David?
Yeah, so I have a theory, I think, specifically about the new program, you know, that they have the harmful algae blooms there pretty regularly, and they have had this year, so access to the lake and use of it has been fairly restricted. I think the, I don't know if it was superficially a drought, but the dry period that we had doesn't help with the torrent because of, they, they need more rainfall, they need to kind of keep that flush out in order to solve that head problem. But I haven't had details about any new efforts in there changing.
Well, Surgey University's group moved in off of Lake Shore Road. There's a road that's not locked. You can go in there, and they're down there doing studies. I personally haven't been there yet, they just moved in. I was talking to some people that can do dredging down the lake. Try to get that lake, there's never a boat out there. I mean, this, some we're trying to do, and I hope they get some answers. When I was in Arizona, they had a lake that was half the size of that. They have a geyser, they pump 24 hours a day, and they shoot us in the air, and it's a geyser aerate the water. I wonder if that kind of, who knows?
Well, you know, because you're involved with the dredging program, there's a lot of silt at the bottom of that lake. And in order to have an effective aeration program like that, you know, you have to have water that doesn't have, it's not heavy in sedimentation. So dredging and the process was a good start for that. Potentially, they could put like a floating aeration system out there. It's not cheap, but it could be done. And I think opening the springs, when they finally get those open, that'll help us a lot as well. Of course, preventing more soil from running off into the lake and more nutrients is a real, excellent solution to that, but it's all got to happen together.
Well, but the fact that my farms both of them drain in the lake, yeah, many, many years ago...
So now you're saying it's your problem?
They'd like to blame the farmers. But many, many years ago, when they had open ditches, we have open ditches today, but generally, these are perimeter ditches, and we use underground tile, so we have less runoff. But years ago, back, many years ago, that washed instant dirt off the mucks.
Dave, just to jump over one other quick thing, at the Human Services Committee meeting yesterday, Director Hamlin from the Veterans Department had mentioned that she is partnering with the Development Office on that rental assistance program. Do you want to just give us a little quick update on that?
Yeah, we finally got contracts and approval with forms and everything last week, and so they're kicking off this week with the outreach for that program. And again, it'll be three months, but money has to be spent by the end of the year, so you're looking at people at a minimum, beginning, you know, October, November, December, funding that are eligible. You'll be hearing a lot more about that probably within the next few days as they start their public relations campaign. They have drop boxes at various places around the county, and they're in our buildings for people to drop applications. They will, first step in the process, the applications go to Veterans Office to be processed for eligibility, then they come here for like the second step. And it's a pretty, pretty fast-paced program in order to get people signed up in time, so we're hoping we'll be able to serve as many people as we have funding for. I don't know that we possibly give them a short timeframe, but we'll work hard to push it out.
Okay, so we should expect to see that, I'm assuming, Facebook, any of the press releases? Will there be any, anything printed out that you had said that we could maybe put in our municipalities, or some of the, I'm trying to think of other places, maybe that? I don't know, who else would make sense to get that out through? Trying to think of others.
Well, it's, you know, income-balanced people who were impacted by COVID and are having trouble paying their monthly bills, and this is a program to help them pay their rent. And there's another program that can be out that's through our housing office where they can get security deposit assistance if they needed that. And that also runs this year. I don't know, are you saying, are they posters or things like that?
With press in the room, I was more looking for you to put in a little plug of where they could call and who they could chat with if they're interested.
Sure. Sure, all that would be in the press release that is going out this week. And Donna Scalen in the planning office and Jamie Hamlin in the Veterans Office are the main coordinators. Call three four nine eight two nine four to reach Donna, eight two nine five. Either one of those, you'll get our office.
That would be for English, French, or Latin speakers?
Yes.
Sorry, Mel has a quick update, go ahead.
Um, I know I had some people call Don's, well, your office to ask about those applications. Now, is there a list that she's going to call these people back or do they need to keep calling? So should they once again initiate or will they be contacted?
Uh, my assumption is, I haven't asked that question to her specifically, but my assumption is if she has a list of people who requested information, then they'll be reaching back to them. Because certainly anybody, you know, they want to get as many people as they can as quickly as they can. So if there's someone who's already identified that they have an interest, my assumption is that they're going to reach out to those people quickly.
And also to go back to fishing, do you have any numbers or data as to how many people come to us from Canada and how we'll be affected because of borders?
So we do get people from Canada, not as many as from the States because, you know, they have opportunities on that side as well. They have stocking programs and they have a fishery that's, it's a pretty good fishery, not as robust as the San River. But because the San River attracts like sixty-five percent of all the anglers on all of the tributaries in the whole lake, we do get some Canadian fishermen as well. I don't know how that's going to impact the numbers this year. I'm guessing that they're going to be down from everywhere. But Canadians are, are, are great visitors, but they're not our biggest group. You know, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts. Virginia sometimes is up there in the top ten, you know, though.
Yeah.
The states that are within like six or seven hours of us are the ones who are going to get the most. But New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts are usually the top three.
Well, some of those states are being dropped off of the quarantine thing also, so that should help. I mean, it's almost daily that they change which states, I mean, are, you know, have to quarantine or not. But I was just curious because Canada, with the proximity to Canada, as how it would affect, but it's not a big, so, that's all, thank you.
Uh, Dave, did you have anything else?
Uh, just Airport Sewer Project is wrapping up. I think by the end of September, we'll be done with that. And then there's another project tied to that that will bring the service into the airport. That's gone out to bid and it will be, the bid report will come before infrastructure this afternoon. So it's possible that by the end of the year or very early next year, we'll have everybody, you know, the airport and all our tenants hooked up. It's going to access them.
That's great. Uh, Dave, do you want to give just a real quick update on the Empire State Development and grant processes this year? I know we haven't, this is kind of our first meeting with you and we haven't really talked about that at all publicly.
Which one?
Uh, just the fact that there's no CFA's this year, if you want to just give a little quick plug on that.
Yeah, so I think that's mostly because the state was drained for COVID and the funds that normally would have been available for other purposes were all funneled into the pandemic response. Not knowing if the feds were going to reimburse counties or the state at full level. Everybody's been pretty careful with handing out money for other purposes until we can get some certainty about that. Hopefully in one of these federal rounds, we'll get some reimbursement we deserve and things financially get closer to normal, even though if it's not medically and health-wise, we'll, we'll never get back to normal. But financially, it'd be, it'd be nice if they recognized the resources that we put into this already.
That's great, thanks, Dave. Anybody else have any questions for Dave? Go ahead, Morris.
Why do you think, or nobody here probably can't, no one I can? Tourists and advisors being able to meet here, is there any?
Well, the chairman has, Rich was staffed so that the county's still under a declaration of emergency, but all the emergency orders have been lifted. So the only restrictions on tourism advisory meeting would be occupancy of the room and whether or not they want to leave the online, they can do that as well if required.
That is one of the larger groups that we have.
Yeah, I know the numbers, but I may not be able to accommodate that in this room. So you may need a larger room like the courtroom or some other room or, you're thirty-five people for the, how many people were on?
Uh, there's about thirty or forty, yeah.
So forty, okay, so you find a room that has at least eighty percent, eighty occupancy, here's percent occupancy for the room. That's socially distanced, that works. So it's, whatever the executive orders are applied to those boards. Then early on, the chair with the declaration of emergency was just trying to curtail advisory boards and other boards you're meeting to cut down on. Because the legislative committees weren't meeting and just, it didn't make sense to bring people together and then spread.
So they did have one meeting last month at Thunder Island, the event building they have there. And I suspect that they'll continue to try to find venues where they can accommodate the group. I spoke with Janet about her plans for September, but.
Yeah, there are no restrictions on the.
Dave, do you have to know how many people were at that meeting?
I don't know.
Just kind of curious. All right, thank you, Morris, that's a good question. Um, if nothing else for Dave, I know Mel has an update from, so I'm going to walk her through it after. If you want to do Dave's first. Oh, thanks.
Mike's.
All right, if nothing else for Dave, we will shift it over. Mr. Tredwell is here with us today, welcome back, sir, it is good to see you in person.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Rich. And then, Mike, feel free to give your presentation from wherever you would like today.
Well, I'm going to just judge a few things. Everybody got a copy of the anger report, pretty much late, but still got her done and kind of printed out. If anybody who wants a hard copy, I have the hard copy here. Not going to go into a lot of detail pertaining to this, you got it. Credit, twenty nineteen was a fundamental, mainly a good year. Twenty twenty is a weird year. Very, very busy, twenty twenty dealing with COVID thing. Probably dealt with two hundred plus companies in terms of either an emergency, long, or a firm that is long. So that's been very, very active. But twenty nineteen, hopefully, we dealt with, the IDA dealt with forty-four different projects. About a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars of total capital investment associated with those projects. Nine hundred and sixty dividend-paying jobs. Projects will, I'm sure some of them have lost jobs temporarily. But those five, the new jobs that created, twenty nineteen will create about seventy million in aid payment paper. The La Cartro building, which is featured on the cover of the anger report. You know, all of those buildings, I mean, you can pretty sit on them. Stairs or whatever, look around the city on the west side and south and going with the, you know, water park going up. You know, there's a lot, a lot of mixed-use development, which is pretty, pretty good for the city of this region. Again, reported that the DRI from Fulton, we see committee met last week. And, you know, I've really gotten a little bit nervous about that, that program has kind of fallen. However, we now had a meeting, we're going to have one more, the LPC meeting to finalize the recommendations from the LPC to go to Albany for the final selection of the projects. It's a, we believe, based on the meeting of the state folks, I'd say that hopefully for the two weeks, three weeks, that that will be wrapped up. And it will be now, I'm not saying how long it's going to be in Albany before any action takes place. But it's moving ahead, the process is going forward. I was very concerned about the funding for the DRI again delayed. Well, it is, it has been to some degree from a standpoint that the process is probably about a month and a half to months behind schedule. But it is on, it is moving, which is very positive. There's, yesterday, we had a representative for CEM, search and design management, who built the second new development on the Neston site. That building, developers named Reese and Spectrum, what, forty people at that location. The developer that built that building, we're also working with, he has property control now, building number thirty, which is a big, lucky building on the corner there that was kind of a U-Haul operation for about a day and a half. And it's, he's a good developer and we're really excited. He's part of the Fulton DRI project too, that that will be a fixed-use facility. He's looking at apartment-grade apartments and commercial use. It's a big building, a pretty big project, he's about to go down to help with that. As he's being told right now. So we're trying to figure out, work out with him some ways to structure it so far as to make that project happen. The, there is probably about, probably be about pushing thirty projects listed that will be hopefully submitted to the state. I mean, it's kind of like this, we go, state holding down twelve, that will, that will fund it. So it's pretty exciting, you know. Our building, the IDA's, maybe factors, our facility is still, you know, offered to receive from the R I funding. We have CFA funding already in place. And we're still trying to, but we have a few little pieces on its overall finance for that project. But it's going, going well and we fully anticipate hopefully receiving the group amount that we're back right now for our building. It's eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars right now. It may get shaved, you never know, trying to squeeze in as many projects as possible yet. But we're actually looking for additional funds on one of the, the bank account now, possibly the PDA funding to go into that project. We're getting, working with the city now on getting a northern border grant that was poured into the city for infrastructure from the Neston site. It's been determined that a better use of that money is to have that transfer to the IDA because the IDA has to construct a road to the site. You can use that. What's going on?
I'm sorry, you just.
I gotta step off for one minute, I'll be right back. I'm so sorry, I'll be right back, Mel's going to go for just.
I was so attentive listening, I get, you know, all of a sudden he says, Mel.
But the, but the northern border important money, we will leave and they're, they're being receptive to it. And we have a working, we're in the process of getting that, that going. It actually saves the city money because we are going to be investing a certain amount of money in infrastructure, road and all that stuff for the building. If the city got the grant, the city will have to spend another three worth of million dollars to get the grant. We're already going to spend that for these buildings that basically saves the city money. And it's still going to serve the same purpose because it's going to be primary for the road and infrastructure associated. So that's, that's a pretty exciting project. We are overwhelmed right now from a standpoint of renewable energy projects, priorities, solar projects. There's probably about, there's one, two, there's two that's operating now. There's about six more in the works of beginning to start construction, roughly seven. And there's about two or three, one three, three four in the hop right now that are new. There's coming in, there's one in there. And probably it's about argument to the planning board, some plan, we will probably have to make this, make it. That's Canadian, that's, that's, um, the form. The sizes of the projects that it did start, starting to get, initially they all started two megawatts. Now they're pushing three and a half, five megawatts in terms of size. But assuming the panel are more efficient or better, they're not using them for land. They're just better power quality, solar panels. So that's, that's been pretty active. As you mentioned, the biggest thing is the big one hundred and nineteen, twenty, and was to build COVID. And we were very successful in terms of getting out about a million dollars in funding to businesses to give a little breathing room. There were all ten thousand dollars, there were loans, but they were deferred, no interest, they were deferred. And each of those companies then borrowed ten thousand dollars and goes to, in October, they, they can go that loan into a two-year term loan. I would say, I want to go a two-year term loan and make a flip to a two-year term loan. So that, I think that will be beneficial for a lot of companies.
Mike, can I just ask at that point, what would be the interest rate when they go to that two-year loan?
When you flip it to two, it'd be three percent.
Three percent?
That's what they are paying for it, two, two, three percent. One of the most exciting projects was helping their class, I mean, they considered expansion of their technology need for their products and the demand for those products on the airport. And that is an exciting project that's going to create about forty, maybe factory jobs initially. And so things were very, very busy. We didn't have our annual meeting like we normally do, not for certain. That was canceled, kept trying to push it back, push it back. Things didn't turn around enough, so we eliminated evidence. We had our annual meeting, we had a virtual annual, annual meeting. Elected three of board members, excited about the new board members, offers, and Shush, 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 who is the president of any D and I in Fulton. We had one of our senior board members retired, Mel White retired, so nine, five ago. ago, uh, Bruce Phelps, uh, so we got another gentleman, uh, which was the same time with the company, sorry, where his second board member, who we were looking at was Joe Powell, uh, who did a lot, uh, he did a lot for, he was a hoodlum back in nineteen ninety-five, who did a lot of office stuff, happened to go to Kansas. And, uh, David Bill, very, very, uh, member and someone you may be familiar with, is the other, uh, member of, on the board or the territory of the street, Shane Carver. Uh, so those are our three, uh, three important members, which, uh, slots we have, we have a board is twenty-four members. Uh, the other thing, uh, the officers of operations, we have a change, uh, we have term limits, uh, some of these only stay in the same office for four years, which is two, two, two-year terms. Uh, the newly elected president of operations, we have a, is Alan, was, she retired, she had a few married opportunities over the years, she's been on board for a long time, has been vice president, she's, uh, president of the next two person. Uh, the VP, uh, from the ag industry inside is Eric Weal, uh, he's now the vice person of operations. Uh, the treasurer is, uh, George Joyce, he was treasurer, previously, not so, he's got to go to charge as treasurer. Uh, he's transportation logistics officer, uh, a big operation, uh, and the, uh, new officer, uh, that was elected is, uh, Tricia Peter Clark, she's connected here, uh, Blackstone area, so those are our new, new officers, uh, departing officer, who made, she's returned, retired, but she is still on board, she, uh, lucky when she retired from the, uh, so we're excited, uh, about a lot of different things, uh, and, uh, hopefully, and I want to thank, uh, the county for, uh, taking care of the rats at the industrial park, they do it, they do it every year, but when it actually done, end of the work, it's really good, after it's done, it's, uh, it's good. Uh, and, uh, we do have a couple tire dealers coming in, uh, hospital project, so, we're running out of space, I consider we're running out of land, that, uh, right now, we're somewhat restricted, probably the biggest sign we pull together, probably about twenty-five acres. Uh, we've got some land on issues, uh, railroad track, we've got a few things that, uh, restrictions that we've got four eighty-one, it's kind of, kind of hard to move that over, give us more land, but, uh, but, uh, we, we are, the IDA are, we've got hospital waves to expand, enhance, uh, ordering to supply, towards landing, they have additional acres, uh, if they, if they don't have it, and you don't have it under control, uh, it makes it very difficult to start fishing for a side, when someone is looking, they have some time trying to actually work, identify, that's how we got EJ. We didn't have, if we had a little piece of property for EJ, if we had control and all that piece of property, it would have been involved with the rats right now. Uh, now we got a plant, it's like, uh, we, very, very, uh, we went through, we, we, and, uh, what do you have any questions? Let me, I'm, I'm for that now, what do you, maybe you have any questions for us?
Thanks, Mike. Sorry to step out there for a second, guys. Do they have any questions for Mike? I had a couple. Mike, are you having to see, you know, a lot of the, the economy is based on consumer confidence, right? And, you know, we're starting to see...
I agree.
What's that?
You're right, I agree.
Sorry. A lot of the economy is based on consumer confidence. Are you starting to see business owners seeming to have a little more confidence? Are you starting to see people willing to expand? Is it still more of a contraction or are you still, are business owners starting, willing to invest right now?
Well, I, I would say the, the act of business attraction has slowed down significantly, even though we're getting, I mean, projects we're getting cut down primarily for new winter related projects. Uh, there's, there's activity, I mean, I, I think there are some opportunities, uh, people are looking at wiring, maybe a business, and making it over and expanding it, I assume we're seeing some of that, and some of that is actually in the, uh, restaurant area. Uh, so, I mean, I think it's kind of like in New York City, my daughter's a, a nursing person in Manhattan, and, uh, she's like, everybody's running out, everybody's leaving New York City, going away, it's, you know, property becoming available, uh, and, and people believe, okay, this is the bottom, I'll buy it now, I'll own it, and I'll, I'll make money on it, and I'll be in Manhattan, I just want to be in Manhattan. I don't want to be in Manhattan, so I, so I, uh, but this is going pretty, pretty strong, uh, we've got a lot to, we've got a lot to say, uh, but, uh, probably should consider, uh, anyway, uh, no, I, I think, uh, there's a number of, you know, like Health Play Building, Hospital Building, those, that's the product of, uh, Northland filters is doing very well. Uh, the House and Sheriff Foundation is very, very grateful and, uh, we have some, we have some help, we sort of benefit from that.
Dave, is there more, uh, Mike, that you do with businesses that are looking to expand, maybe in a new way? We think about...
Sorry. I was about to ask, I'm not gonna tell one of you.
We think a little bit about some of these businesses that are forced to change operations, right? You know, under the new, the new normal, as they're calling it, you're starting to see people be more interested in, in air circulation, in, in seating arrangements, and things that are going to force businesses to, to change the way they do business. Is that something that you guys feel, uh, at your offices, uh, is something you are going, looking forward, or they're just coming in and they're saying, hey, help us, we need to expand because we cannot do business the way we used to? Are you starting to see that? Do you expect to see that?
I think we expect to see almost anything. Uh, we haven't, uh, been faced with companies that, uh, have expressed an issue relative to needing to do anything other than up their money with now, uh, from a manufacturing perspective, now for a retail store, different animal, uh, office facility. Uh, I mean, I, quite frankly, I, we are in a, a little bit of a difficult time, uh, but that's, so we got to do it, we got to do it. Uh, every year, every IDA, uh, project that we work with, that we have on our lease or certain lease transaction, uh, or our audit, we, we do audit confirmation with companies on employment, as of July thirty-first, uh, number of employees you had on your payroll at that time and the estimated, uh, payroll for that month. Uh, and, you know, everybody's asking, well, do you want to know what I got really on, or you want a number like pre-COVID, that's not. Give us the number, this is a lot, give us the number you got on that day, we're going to have some horrible numbers, I am sure, but it's going to be a foot number in any audit, to, to associate with the company, but, but the number and, you know, kind of business magazine is basically the same thing, they do it sort of every year, top hundred companies, based on employment, and they're getting the same thing, they don't know how to handle that, do we, they can handle average, do we take it what it is right now, or, or pre-COVID, or what you expect, it's going to be, post-COVID, it's, it's, uh, it's going to be tricky numbers, but, and it's not going, it's not going to look so good.
Really good sign is that next year, hopefully, it'll be a great growth.
The crazy thing is, in terms of my lifetime, uh, when I'm first standing here, uh, the unemployment rates we've had is better than the state and the nation. I've never seen that. I don't know, Dave, if you ever seen that, I've never seen that, we're, we're, what's better than, I love that.
Traditionally, we've been one of the higher ones, and only, like, a couple places in New York City and one other county would be ahead of us. We've always been in the top five worst unemployment rates in the state, now it's turned around. And I, if I can, I think one thing, uh, one advantage that we have, we've been very proactive about our, uh, response to the pandemic. Chairman talks about it every, every week, about the importance of protective measures and, uh, protecting yourself, your family, your community, your customers, your neighbors. So, this has been turned into an opportunity for us because now, when people are making decisions about where they travel, because travel is very restricted, people are looking for places where there's a demonstration that it's safe to go there, and our infection rate has definitely been very low, below one percent for, for quite a while now. And I think some of that is transitioning even into people where they're looking to invest, because, you know, that's become a new metric. It, it used to be, you have water, sewer, electricity, roads, proximity to market, things like that. Now people are considering, how safe is this community, where I'm thinking about investing my money and creating new jobs, or I want to move my family there, could I ask my employees to go there? So, our response to the pandemic with our partners and, and keeping the infection rate low and being out front about, you know, social distancing and masks, um, I think that's helping us on both those fronts, making us more attractive to casual visitors, uh, and also potentially to investors, so, um, there's an upside, if you will, to our efforts to continue to kind of enforce personal protective measures during this time of uncertainty.
That's a good point.
Well, there's one thing, uh, that I had, in our perspective, I mean, if you look at the mix of businesses and industries, uh, yes, we have county, uh, you know, we got a lot of industry related, a lot of manufacturing, a lot of tourism related, but we don't have the skyscraper office buildings, we don't have the concentration of everybody inside walls and buildings, uh, like you do in urban areas, that's at one point, uh, and they should have a bigger concern about things working out okay with people working at home. Uh, there's going to be a lot of real estate, uh, I don't know who's going to be buying it, but there's going to be a lot of real estate, so, uh, the big office complexes that, uh, people are in the side, well, I think I could get by with ten thousand square feet, not fifty thousand square feet.
That's true. I had, uh, three, three, um, classmates from high school who lived in the city, New York City, uh, worked for large businesses. All three of them have moved back to, one in Andaga, two here in Oswego County, because they're working from home, and why do they want to live in the city if they're working from home? And so, they moved their families back, they bought houses here, and, you know, that's their plan is to be here. So, you're right, that, that's a really good point, so...
My daughter's been doing that, uh, we have a house in New Jersey, she and her kids, and that's, uh, we work, and they, they in our place for about three months, still in and out. Uh, but the only problem is it gets a little difficult to show, and you, we're not there, so she has to go back and show people, so, but, yeah, I think that's going to be a big, big, uh, change.
Um, I did want to give a, oh, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, so, I'm glad that you brought up the remote work because, you know, that's an opportunity for us if we can, um, successfully build out some better broadband capability here, uh, because now jobs are not going to be, you can create jobs, but they don't have to be in one building at one site. You know, you can be employing a hundred new people who are working from their home, so, you know, job opportunities will increase with us enhancing infrastructure like broadband.
And that's actually, I was, if you want to, you want to give a little bit, I was just going to jump to that, so if you want to give just a little update about kind of where we as a county are...
Go ahead.
Okay.
Your agenda.
Yeah, I, one of the things that we're real excited about is, you know, a couple years ago, we as a, as a legislature commissioned in, in partnership with the IDA and others in County, a study to really look into, um, where, where are we headed? Where's our economy headed? Where are our businesses headed? How do we handle if there is, you know, God forbid, a, a, a closing of our, of our larger employers here in our county? Um, and one of the things that came out of that was really, obviously, a need for infrastructure, which we, I think we all knew, but it was good to see that on paper. Uh, there was a doubling down on what's already working, which, which we've all, you know, makes sense if something's working, you want to keep investing into it. Uh, but one of the other items that they talked about was, you know, maybe some of our areas of need when it came to infrastructure. And one of those things, obviously, we, you know, we don't have sewers throughout our entire county, and that's, that's an area of need. We have many areas that could develop without the, the proper foundation, it makes it tricky. Uh, but one of the things that we're seeing now, and it's being highlighted in this time, is the fact that we do not have broadband, or we do not have high-speed internet in a lot of our smaller municipalities, uh, farther away from the river in general, it seems to be, they don't have quite that capacity. And with the school districts, many of them going to a point where they are, you know, if you're a middle school or older, you're, you're doing school at home by yourself, you need to have access to the internet, I mean, it makes sense. And we have found that many of our schools do not have that capacity, uh, many of our students in our schools throughout our municipalities do not have that capacity. Um, we as a county invested, and I don't know the exact specifics, but we invested quite a bit of, uh, of money into putting in a, a, a high-speed loop, right, Dave? Is that a fiber loop?
Sixty mile loop connects most of our buildings.
Yeah, throughout the county, it's sixty mile loop. And so, we've already invested quite a bit of money into, uh, starting that process, but the reality is, we don't know, you know, if you were to spend, spend a map kind of thing and drop your finger down, we don't know if that person has internet capacity. And so, uh, we are in the process of working, partnering with, um, such a New York or regional planning, uh, as well as looking to get some funding through the CARES money to put together a study that would be very, very detailed, uh, who doesn't have it? Who doesn't have wa- wireless, uh, who doesn't have cell phone signals in our county? Again, we're a very rural, very large county, um, and I think many of you know, serving more rural population, that, that we, this is needed. So, no problem is, it's not going to be immediate, we won't have an answer immediately, but we will know, uh, far better where we stand, uh, with that infrastructure, hopefully in the next four to six months, Dave? Is that a reasonable timeline, somewhere in that range?
Uh, I'd say maybe this time next year, we might be able to expect something closer to a final report.
So, uh, we have talked about too, some, some more immediate, I know the school districts are tasked with this, this is their responsibility, but obviously, it's also ours, and, uh, if we can find a way to help, um, share some of what we've already put in, that would be great. Uh, it's difficult, though, it's difficult to be able to in some of our more rural areas, but it is something that is, is a focus of Dave's, uh, planning department, but also, yeah, my understanding, us as a legislature, and really did come out of our study that we, we commissioned years ago. So, um, that's, you know, kind of a, a little bit of preview, we hope to be able to share more with that, anyone who's interested who'd be part of that, and it's going to be a, a pretty detailed survey, and so we're going to probably need some help, uh, in those areas. And again, Dave Botar, regional planning, is, I think, taking the lead on that. It's not just our county, we're working with him on a few other counties as well, but specifically, obviously, we care about this one, so...
Tom Hill has a, a similar, uh, study going out that will help support that bigger analysis, so. And it's not just rural, we have major employers in our cities and, and towns and villages who don't have the capacity that they need to, to really stay competitive in, in their industry, so, uh, it, it, it's, it's all over, just, just because, uh, you live in one of our urban areas, doesn't mean you have the service that you need to do what doesn't mean you have the service that you need to do what you need to do.
Well, I would think with the influx of all these people coming in, needing this service, would be great for us to partner with the spectrums of the world. Because they've got potential, a lot of new customers. They have the potential of making money. So I would think they'd be wanting to really tap, to be able to get some funding to help us get that broadband out there. Because it's not just one person here and one person there anymore. There's going to be a lot of people, and the schools especially, as you said.
That's a good point. All right, Morris, did you something?
I'd just like to make a comment. The Industrial Development Agency has helped in many, many areas. Not because I'm a member, but Mike, the Sore Project at the airport, about a hundred thousand. Was it a hundred thousand? Did you help with?
Two fifty. Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Oh, for Sore.
Yeah.
Sore line, oh, okay.
The Sore Project is fought out from the city of Fulton. Goes to the industrial park, the IDA Airport. And that, that'll help that particular type of lot. There, you're right there in the industrial park there. What people don't realize, in a lot of cases, and Mike has brought up this thing about Nestle's. Fulton has had not too much money. We have New Mariana. And of course, like everything else, it costs money. Look, the spec building is going out in the site. Nestle's, a work that has been done by the IDA in putting up that building and putting that road in. These are all things that people don't realize. Infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. And if you don't have it, you don't get it. And the industrial park in, in Phoenix, I don't know how the water situation is up there, but that is being worked on. You know, the water situation.
Water is good.
Huh?
Water is good.
Yeah, and the Sore Project. Sore Project.
Sore is a different animal.
But I want to compliment that guy who's here. He's, he's been, his leadership has brought in a lot of stuff being done ahead of time to create jobs.
Thanks, Morris. All right, if there's anything else, did you want to do the?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I've got a hard copy of the report that Joe Sirfod gave me from Soil and Water. I'm on that board. So we've been meeting and they were, working remotely for a while. But June, they came back. And I just wanted to go over some basics. Is that they did have the tree shrub sale in April and they sold like four thousand shrubs. They were able to still give out twelve, fifteen hundred seedlings to schools and educational things. They did it with no contact type of thing. They were able to still get their workers out there to do the hogweed. They went to sixty different hogweed sites, which, as we all know, the hogweed is an extremely toxic plant that we really need to keep under control. And they have found where some really huge acres and acres of it are now reduced to almost nothing. They really had a search for them, but they're continuing it. They've done eighty-eight acres of water chestnut. And they did it through hand pulling and mechanical use as well as herbicide. And they had to reduce their number of people because it can only be so many people in a boat. Because of COVID, they can only be so many people in a van. So they reduced the number of people going out. But we had the students out there hand pulling it. They ended up pulling fourteen thousand pounds of hand pulling of water chestnuts. And it's only like a thirty-day window when you can treat it. It's a very short window that you can treat this. They also have been very busy in the Oswego County reforestation and making sure the perimeters and all the acres of our forests. And with, they had a timber sale that they did. And they've also been very busy with the private forestry and helping people take care of their forests. But what I thought was interesting is they've been very inundated by requests from individual landowners for drainage, beaver dams, things helping them with their farm. And they felt a lot of that was because people were home. And they were taking more visual of their land and what they could do to improve it. And so they have really, really utilized our Soil and Water Conservation District. Joe's been very busy. It's been very good. So, and they, a huge on COVID thing of what they've been dealing with. Yes.
Do, are they utilizing any drone technology at all?
They have, they've gotten some people that have been able to do some drone. They would like to get more to oversee where all of it is. Yes, they're right, actually right down the process of mapping for the next season. So they will be using drones, will be using visual, and people that even call in. And a lot of your residents actually, they go out around their dock and they'll be pulling themselves. But it's all of the, no, it's way in the sand that can come back up. It's very resilient plant, shall we say.
I think you can find beaver dams pretty quickly.
Yeah.
We have an organization at the mall in Fulton. It has worked with drones. They are in the commercial business. They can be, I'm trying to think of their names. I have written it down, but he, he definitely is on the board at the airport. And they have a business there for drones and they can do a lot with drones.
I believe in the last Oil and Water meeting, they were talking about that particular gentleman. So I think they're looking at it.
John McGraw is the president and the owner of that complex. And he's in the mall in Fulton.
Yep. Yep, they can nail law, I don't know what you mean.
And they do a lot with drones and everything else. It's amazing what they can do with them drones.
Oh, it is. Very amazing. As we can see from a lot of our tourism videos that they, they produce with the drones going over. It's wonderful. Brilliant.
Thanks, Matt. Dave?
Well, legislator General, I'm, I'm happy that you're on that board and that you're very, you appear to be very passionate about their work. One thing that we could use some, some help with that has always kind of dropped off the table because there were more pressing things to deal with. But we have a lot of county lands, reforestation properties and others. But we don't really have any rules or regulations about how the public can use them or if they should be using them. And if the opportunity presents itself, it'd be good to maybe through some work with your colleagues to talk about what kind of restrictions, like can you go camping? Can you walk in there with a tent and set up a campsite and stay overnight and have a fire? You know, there's, can you go hunting in there? Can you go, should we allow snowmobiles on these properties? So we have an inventory of what we own. We just don't have a good use plan for those properties.
Oh, that's great.
It'd be nice to, to make some efforts towards looking at that.
I did bring up about the use of snowmobiles and ATVs in there. He says there are trails to go through there. That part I did mention, but I didn't even think about being able to go in there and camp or hunt. What are our restrictions? That's great. Definitely I'll look at them into it. We can maybe get a meeting together.
I know we've heard from a number of folks who would love to see a frisbee golf course somewhere in our county. So that would be something to talk about as well. I know Dave's heard a couple of times and, and remember, I've heard that probably two or three times since I've been on this.
Might be better with frisbee than golf, like kick golf.
Frisbee golf? All right.
I think there's plans for one at the property nearby Tailwater.
Oh, okay.
Great, Tailwater.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you, everyone. Anything else before we close up?
Before, before you leave, if I can get you to sign the budget mod, I think.
All right. Well, I will look for the appropriate motion. And Morris? All in favor? Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.